Council, if I could ask you to take your seats. We will get started on the executive session of the Clarksville City Council. Before we get started, Sergeant Primera, where are you? You're in the back? Please stand, sir. Councilman Burkhart has got a sign-in sheet. He's a rock-a-son and he's taken a class and he, I guess he was being punished and had to attend a government meeting. And so here he is. If you'd signed that, that's proof that he was here. So please give him a hand and say thank you for your service.[32.11][32.11](APPLAUSE). It'll make its way around the horseshoe and Councilman Garrett will have it shortly. Thank you. Okay. First item up is to talk about the Clarksville-McGumry County African-American Legacy Trail. This is an exciting project and I'll ask Terry and Shannon and company to come up and approach the podium. You have before you on your desk a brochure and they will give you the backstory and the background information on it, but this is an exciting project and I want to commend this group for it and they want to explain it to you. So Shannon, you are recognized if you would introduce everybody.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Pitts. Thank you, council members, for hearing us about this project. My name is Shannon Thornton and I am an advisory board member of Rossview High School's Academy of Media Arts and Technology. And I've been working with them for about four years as an advisory board member. And in the process, I was writing a play, a historical play about the history of Clarksville, Montgomery County. And I also wrote for the Becoming Clarksville: Legacies of Leadership Exhibition that's in the Customs House Museum. So in the process of that, I became interested in the history of Clarksville African-Americans, specifically the Burt's led me down this road. I really fell in love with this couple and I thought they were exceptional, remarkable people. And so I reached out to my friend Jerome Parchman, who is a historian. We graduated from Austin Peay together and we both worked at the Allstate together. He was a writer and I was the editor-in-chief there in the late 90s. And so he said he would gladly help me with this. And so then I reached out to Hannah Brooks, who's a teacher at Rossview High School and in charge of the Academy of Media Arts and Technology. And we met with a group of students first to just talk about what this would look like, what it would feel like, what we wanted to accomplish with it, and then kind of came up with their plans for having a map on the inside, having it open up to be a keepsake. And so this has been last school year that we talked and kind of went through our plans. And then this school year, Catherine Boyer, who's a student in the program, stepped forward and made the design for us and has created the entire brochure for us. So this was all, and this is Terry Morris, my husband, who's been, a lot of you have heard from because he's been our fundraiser and public relations person out there, really communicating with everyone for us because we're book people who, you know, sit back there in the archives and look up stuff and they're designers. So we needed a front person to really communicate with everyone. So what we've done is create the brochure and now we have an agreement from Copies in a Flash to print 500 free copies for every 500 that are purchased. It costs $550 to purchase 500 copies of these. So that's 1,000 that we can get for $550. Copies in a Flash said they will do it for the life of this. So 20 years from now, they'll still be printing the free 500 for us with that price quote. So that is excellent. I don't know anyone in town who, no one else has offered that. So that's our best offer and that's a great offer. We set up, and we want to invite you to our celebration and community conversation about this. We set up an event at the library on the 19th from 5 to 7. We worked with a lot of other people in the community who were fact-checkers, advisors, just people who love history. And so one of the most beautiful things is hearing all the stories from people about their experiences, where they've been. That's why I wanted to do this and give it to the community. So all funds, no one's made a penny and in fact, people have paid to play in this development. So all the money is going for print costs. So we're asking you to help us, spread the word, share this, friends and family, come out to the celebration, and then please help us get it in print, keep it in print because we do have a pledge right now from Arts and Heritage Development Council for part of the first 550 and then a private donor for the other part. So we do have a commitment for the first 1,000 to get printed. So thank you very much for...
Any questions? I want to thank you for being here today. An exciting new project for our community and it's fitting you're here because tomorrow's the first day of February and it's Black History Month. So encourage everyone to participate in your events. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[313.58][313.58](APPLAUSE). Next up, we have Erin Hester. Erin is Montgomery County Assessor of Property. She is going to talk to us about everybody's favorite subject, reappraisal.
Taxes. Taxes. Well, thank you for having me. Thank you also for, well, congratulations to the new ones and those of you who have remained. I've been in government, I guess, now since 2003 and I have always heard this is where the rubber meets the road, is in local government. And when you're talking to people about property value and ultimately what they're paying taxes on, then that becomes actually quite apparent. Quick note before I get started, this is the brochure. You should all have one with my business card that has my email address and other contact information. I have multiple of these with me and I have more coming. So if you would like to take some or have me or somebody deliver some to you, please just let me know. Ultimately, I do want to talk to you about reappraisal, but before I start that, I just wanted to give you some quick growth numbers for specifically the city of Clarksville from tax year 17 to tax year 18, the year we just closed. For your information, the city of Clarksville, just specifically city limits, has over $10 billion in market value in real and personal property within the city limits. So that is a considerable number. That makes up over 46,000 parcels. All of this information is in the document that I've given you. I'm not going to read it to you or break this down, but what I believe, I'm sorry, the 46,000 is residential. The total is 58,400. What is significant because it's exceptional over prior years is the market value and assessed value growth that the city of Clarksville experienced from tax year 17 to tax year 18. That was over $71 million in appraised value. So that appraised value, the assessment growth, I'm sorry, was the 71 million and that is multiplied times the tax rate for the city of Clarksville and then therefore that is growth dollars that the city has the benefit of using without having to raise taxes for. So that's the summary for the tax year. So let's talk about reappraisal. Reappraisal is mandated by the state of Tennessee. There's a lot of fear with reappraisal. There's a lot of misconception tied to a reappraisal. But a reappraisal, the intent is to bring all of the property within the county. And I'm going to talk about it in terms of county because we do it countywide and then we report separately to the city. So the reason we revalue is that there are areas of the county that have experienced, you know, big growth. There are areas of the county that maybe have actually seen decline. And then there is just, there's different levels of growth across the county. Well, we haven't revalued since 2014. And in 2014, we reset to market. But there are people who are living in houses, let's talk about the interstate exits or commercial properties as well, where they've experienced significant growth since 2014, but they're still paying taxes at that 2014 rate. The converse is also true. There are people that are paying taxes at the 2014 rate, but maybe the property or the business or the area has declined. So our goal is equity and that's to make sure that everybody is paying at fair market value. So the point of the revaluation is to bring every property in the county government back to its market value so that we can restore equity across the county. How we do it, I'll just be really brief because it's kind of dry and it's really long, but ultimately it comes down to sales. So in calendar year 2018, we transferred by way of what happened in the market, over 9,000 registered deeds. But we only use the ones that are arms-length, qualified, open market, willing buyer, willing seller. Those are the ones that we use to establish the base rates, the new land values and the new lot values for all of the property within the county. That brings us to the place where, once we have that equalized value using the sales from 2018, then I will sit down with mayors and the finance directors and we will work together to recalculate a new certified tax rate. Montgomery County, city of Clarksville are very fortunate because we have always experienced growth. Not every community sees that, but our certified tax rate will then drop in Montgomery County, city of Clarksville. State law says that if the legislative body intends to pass a tax rate in excess of the certified rate, it has to be advertised as such. So we'll sit down, we will calculate the new certified tax rate, the State Board of Equalization will approve that, and then I will present that to Mayor Pitts and Mayor Durritt. And ultimately, that is the end of the revaluation process. One thing to note, because we have property owners in the room and citizens that watch these meetings, we have an appeal process. There will be notifications sent to every single property owner in May. Old value, new value, and how to appeal, how to contact us and ask questions is all on that form. That information is all also in here. So really, that's the end of it. There's lots more about our office and what we do on here, but those are the highlights. I am happy to come to your church group, your town hall, your HOA, your civic group. It is important to me that the public gets the information. I'd really love to work on knocking out some of these misconceptions, but when you do something only once every five years, it can be a bit of a struggle to remember. So questions?
Any questions? Council Lady Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you for that input and information you just gave us. It helped me out a lot. My question is simple. I know you said that we can do appeals. Would that be one-on-one with each owner or you have to set up an appointment? How would you handle the appeals?
The way the appeals work is we take walk-ins. You can set up an appointment. We like to have an informal appeal process in the office because what we do is mass appraise. There may be an exception to your property that we don't know about. Believe it or not, people change their properties and they don't pull permits. So we might not always know that something has changed with that property or maybe something else has gone on with it and there's an increased appreciation that could be applicable that we don't know about. So we like to start with the informal process so we can ask the questions and make sure that we have all of the information that we need. If the assessor's office and the homeowner maybe still aren't on the same sheet of music as to what that market value is, then we move on to county board of equalization. And those are set by appointment, but you can walk in to those too. It's just the appointments do take precedent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Erin, for being here and I'm sure we'll be seeing you more.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all's time.
Okay. Let's get into our agenda. It's time for the planning commission. Mr. Tindall?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Here to present two cases tonight and an additional ordinance we'll get into in a moment. First case we have tonight is our case number Z1 2019. It's the application of Ben Kimbroke, Coy Baggett Jr. and others. The agent is Sango Place Group. Agent is Cal McKay. Property is 16.28 acres. It's currently zoned C5 and they're requesting to go to C2. I'll note for this application and the next application, because they both have the same request going from C5 to C2. C5 is our highway and arterial zoning classification. It allows for nearly every commercial use, especially in that is specific to automobile uses in the C5, auto dealers, auto parts, auto repair, body shops, that kind of stuff. C2 does not allow those auto-oriented uses, but instead, C2 also allows for mixed use, allowing both commercial and residential multifamily. Both can be on the same lot, they can subdivide it, and it's meant to be a little more mixed use in neighborhoods. So that's what both these applications are going from, the C5 to the C2. It is not an extension of C2 in this area. This area is bounded by 101st Airborne Division Parkway and it's east of Fort Campbell Boulevard and Victory Road is the little road to the west out there. It's a fairly level grassland with streets and shrubs on both sides bordering this property. The applicant's statement is that the property is no longer marketable as a C5 property due to limited access. C2 would allow for more flexibility and potential development. The access to this property is off of Eagle Court, I believe. That's this road here. That's the Honeycut Realtor on the left, for those of you who know that, right before the on-ramp to 101st. So that's one access. You have one access the street over. These are stubs, streets that could be extended into the property if the applicant wanted to. And then there's one a little further down. This road parallels the property. It's a mix of mobile homes and some other older properties out there on Normandy. In fact, as you can see here, someone's hooked up a fifth wheel on one of their properties out there. This development has the potential to, you know, improve this area pretty well. This is from the median of 101st looking over. Fort Campbell Boulevard's at your back here, under the underpass. The property's just over there on the right. And here it is from 101st, there's a property. Access is a bit of a challenge. You can go in and out of Victory, but Victory doesn't have a four-way intersection with 101st, so you'd have to do a mix of going in and going down a block and turning around out of light or coming in off 101st and coming in and out of those intersections on, sorry, Fort Campbell Boulevard, coming in and out of those intersections there. There's a prior zoning history on this. Back in 1992, it was originally zoned to C5, so it's been sitting since 1992, unsold and unbuilt upon. This is Victory Lane, you're seeing in this picture, and there's the property from Victory There is the proposed impacts on surrounding areas. It could have an increase to light traffic and noise. However, the zoning classification of C5 would probably produce the same amount if developed. There we go. If developed as a mixed use, if it was solely developed as multifamily, you could look at a potential of 193 units. It is in the Peters Mill Planning Area. Staff recommended approval based on the four conditions listed. The proposed zoning request is consistent with the adopted land use plan. The proposed C2 zoning classification affords a mix of uses, commercial and multifamily development, which is a good use of this area. The adopted land use opinion map identifies this area for mixed-use corridor and land use plan also further details that mixed-use residential and commercial development should be considered. Adequate infrastructure does serve the site and no environmental issues were identified at this time, and the Regional Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Any questions of Mr. Tindall about this case? Thank you, Mr. Tindall. Next?
Sure. Moving on. This is our case Z3 2019, the application of WBW Developers Group. It's 2.79 acres off of the northwest corner of 101st Airborne Division Parkway and Ashridge Drive. Here's a blow-up of the property. The Dollar General out there is the sort of inset inside this L-shaped property. It's currently a vacant C5 lot with access off of Ashridge Drive. They could not get access off of 101st up there. It's both due to the grade and it is a limited access highway in this area. This property does have previous history. Back in 1999, it was zoned to C5 and a portion of it was sold off for the Dollar General. There's the zoning map, as you can see. This area of Ashridge Drive is a bit of a ridge. There's two low areas on each side. As you can see, it's pretty wooded, so there's not a lot of opportunity to the east and the west to expand. There's a lot of multifamily quadplexes and sixplexes to the rear here. The applicant would go to C2. Again, C2 providing the flexibility for both commercial, if they could get it, as well as multifamily, if that's their desire as well. Here's the property on 101st looking down. Like I said, it drops off from the property a little bit. There's the Dollar General adjacent to it, looking from Dollar General up Ashridge Drive. Here's the entrance to the property. The area they would have to use is right here, their legal access. And there's the rear of the property. You can see the other multifamily units in the back. It is in the Lafayette Planning Area. If developed as mixed use, you'll be looking at a potential of 33 units. Planning staff recommends approval based on the fact that the proposed zoning request is consistent with the adopted land use plan. The proposed C2 zoning classification affords mixed-use, commercial and multifamily development potential. The adopted land use opinion map identifies this area for commercial and multifamily development and the land use plan further details that mixed-use residential and commercial development should be encouraged. An adequate infrastructure serves this site and no adverse environmental issues were identified at this time, and the Regional Planning Commission also voted for approval.
Councilman Burkhart?
Thank you, Mayor. I am one of the owners in this property. I will be abstaining on the vote and I just want to let everybody know that I would be abstaining on that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions, Mr. Tindall, on this? Thank you.
Okay. The other ordinance up tonight that involves our department is ordinance 41, 2018, 2019. Those of you who were on the council just a little few months ago will remember, we had two annexations last year. A1, 2018, that was the area off Rossview Road around the Athletic Complex area and International Drive. And A2, 2018, just recently adopted in the winter here, small 17 acres off Tyler Town Road area. These properties need to be added to city wards for voting purposes, and that's the purpose of this ordinance, to show you that the portion off of Rossview Road would be added to Ward 10 and the portion would be added in the north off of Ward 12. I've been working with city attorney Lance Baker and Sylvia Skinner on this to make sure we have the ordinance right. Lance is also here to answer any questions. The ordinance is to basically amend the previous adopted ward map, just adding this as the new ward map until the next census, when there will be redistricting based on the population growth in this area. So for the time being, these two areas will be added to Ward 10 and Ward 12 until redistricting. Happy to answer any questions on this.
Any questions?
And basically, anytime we have an annexation from here on, we're probably going to have to update this ordinance every time we do it to go and coordinate with that. In the past, I think it may have been done different, but the city charter has changed and that's now the purpose of doing that. We'll have to do the ordinance change. Currently, there are no annexations in our office, but if there are, we'll tack it on with the annexation at that time.
Thank you. Any questions about that? It's pretty clear. Thank you, Mr. Tindall.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, consent agenda?
Ordinance 29, 2018, 19, second reading. Amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville. Application of the state of Harold W. Weekly, Kathy Beider Executrix for zone change on property located north of Crossland Avenue, east of Martin Street, south of Washington Street, and west of Greenwood Avenue from our four multiple-family residential district to IC Institutional Civic District. Ordinance 38, 2018, 19, second reading. Amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville. Application of Philip O'Neill Walker, Houston Smith Agent for zone change on property located at the intersection of Ringel Road and Brentwood Circle from AG Agricultural District to R1, single, excuse me, AG and R1 Single Family Residential District and C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to our four multiple-family residential district. Resolution 41, 2018, 19, approving appointments to the Clarksville Housing Authority, Senior Citizens Board, and Two Rivers Company. Resolution 42, 2018, 19, approving a certificate of compliance for sale of wine at Chums Marathon, 811 Peters Mill Road. Resolution 43, 2018, 19, approving a certificate of compliance for sale of wine at Publix, 920 Highway 76. Adoption of minutes, January 2 and January 3.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any questions about anything on the consent agenda? All right. Thank you. We are now in the reports, committee reports. Chairman Allen, Community and Economic Development.
I'm going to report Thursday, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Finance Committee, Chairman Burkhart?
Thank you, Mayor. Two resolutions tonight, both involving gas and water. Resolution 44 is authorizing an interlocal agreement with Fort Campbell, Kentucky and the Department of Defense. This is pertaining to transportation of natural gas over the Clarksville gas pipelines. Infrastructure, they'll be simply, we'll simply be transporting that gas through our lines to Fort Campbell. We won't be selling it to them, just transporting. There's an agreement. If there's any questions, Mr. Hickey is here. Do you have any questions for...
Councilman Powers, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Actually, this one was also before us today in the Gas and Water Committee, so I just want to interject at this point that it was approved by the Gas and Water Committee about an hour ago, so.
And actually, that holds true for 44 as well as 45.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? All right. Councilman Burkhart?
Resolution 45 is authorizing an interlocal agreement with Hopkinsville Sewage and Waterworks Commission for gas sales. Also, we have a, this one won't be a transport. I think this is actually a sale based to a meter and I think they're trying to serve some customers up on the Oak Grove side of Hopkinsville. And Mr. Hickey is here. If anybody has any questions for that, I'm sure he can answer them.
Questions of Councilman Burkhart or Mr. Hickey?
That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Burkhart. Gas and Water Committee, Chairman Powers, you promised a riveting and robust report.
Well, thank you. I may have to wait until next week on that, but we're going to start out with ordinance 39. And this was authored, in fact, we took 39 and 40 together, authorizing the extension of utility services in both of them. Once again, it goes from the city to outside into the county. Keep in mind for everybody here that these people do pay a premium for these services. They have to pay for the lines as they're installed and in addition to that, they pay a 25% premium for theirs. But the county residents are reaping the benefits of the city in this particular instance and have for years, and I agree with it 100%. But anyway, both of those were approved by the Gas and Water Committee earlier and then third one on here is Resolution 46 was authorizing an interlocal agreement with Woodlawn Utility District. And if anybody has any questions on that, this was kind of an oversight that was done years ago and this is kind of rectifying a situation that's been in existence for quite some time. But this, if anybody else has any further questions on that, I'm sure Mr. Hickey will be glad to speak to those.
Any questions, Chairman Powers or Mr. Hickey on any of those, these three? Y'all are easy tonight.
And the last one, Mayor, is department reports and that's the one that we'll get to next week.
That's riveting, okay.
That's right. That's the one you should be waiting for.
I'll wait for the movie. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Powers. Chairman Guzman, Parks and Recreation. Oh, I'm sorry. That's me, right?
Mm-hmm. I'll have a report next week. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Next on our agenda, Public Safety Committee, that would be Chairman Henley.
I'll have a report on Thursday, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Next item is Streets and Garage Committee, and that's Chairman Chandler. He is not here tonight, nor will he be here next week, and I will give his report next week. And Transportation Committee Chair, Lady Smith, you are recognized. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Before we move on, Councilman Herb, you had a question?
Councilman Chandler asked me to give the report.
Okay.
But if you want to get it, I'll...
No, I stand corrected. We'll... We'll let you do it. All right, now we're on to the Transportation Committee and Chair Lady Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I ditto the same.
Ditto, okay. All right, we're moving along. We are now in new business. Any items of new business? See none? Hear none? Okay. Mayor and staff reports. Let me, a couple of things I want to mention. We had a recently retired firefighter, Lieutenant Maurice Reeves, pass away a couple of nights ago. He served faithfully and nobly our Clarksville Fire and Rescue Department for over 30 years. He had just retired maybe three weeks ago, and he passed away suddenly this week. His funeral will be next week. You'll get more information about that, so please be in prayer for his family. And then speaking of fire rescue, Chief Roberts, your guys and gals did a great job at the Ashford Place Apartment Fire, along with the Clarksville Police Department. The Street Department was there, even Gas and Water showed up to make sure the water was operating, so did very well.
It serves around.
Yes, it does. And then Saturday begins our Tax Saturdays, which our City Hall tax windows will be open on the first floor, so I would encourage you to spread the word that people can come in and pay their taxes on Saturday during the month of February. Ms. Mata, anything I need to add to that?
Just until noon.
Just until noon, from 8 till noon on Saturday mornings. I encourage you to pay those taxes. All right, any other staff reports or council information we need to know about? Okay, this is the part of the meeting where we have public comments. If you're in the public, would like to address the council on anything other than zoning cases, you're encouraged to come forward. You'll have five minutes to do so. Anybody wish to speak to the council? We're a pretty friendly group tonight. I see none, so we will stand adjourned until next Thursday. Thank you.